Council meeting, decision to order. And as usual, we always start by saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
Kaylee, would you like to lead us?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, did we have a chance for everybody to take a look for the council minutes for the 26th and the 9th? Want to break them out separately? Are there any changes, additions, or corrections to be made? First to the 26th?
Note to approve.
Second. Okay, how about the 9th? Any corrections?
Note to approve.
Let's make the motion to approve both. Yes. Let's make the motion to approve both. Goodman, second. Those in favor? Okay, thank you. I was just showing you how to raise your hand. Don't count me as a member. I was just showing.
I got it.
Okay. I knew it wasn't your first day here.
Yeah.
Okay, and then the Board of Public Works and Safety for July 14th and the 28th are in your packets for information. Hold me. Okay, well, first thing on our agenda under Communications, I have the honor of, first of all, greeting troop number 220 of the Boy Scouts of America. Again, back to, back to our meeting. City Council meeting, how many are you getting a credit tonight because of a public meeting? Let's see, show of hands. No?
They're not sure.
They're not sure? Well, as far as I'm concerned, you get credit, okay? But I do believe you're all here in support of your scout colleague, Kaylee DeSonia, right? Right? That's, that's the big, big deal tonight, right, coming? That'll wait. Thank you very much for that. So without further ado, Kaylee, would you step forward here in front of the council? And before I come down and read this to you, I'd like for you to meet Councilman Wilson. There I'm in. Let's show up and give him the grip. Okay. Councilman Thompson. Now see, he stood you off. Did you still have a good grip? Councilwoman Gunter? Councilman Goodman? And Councilman Smith? Did you notice how nice he is, how he stood up while everybody else sat down? So he, he's been around a while. Okay, well, Kaylee is here because she just made a very, very special accomplishment here. You are an Eagle Scout, correct?
Yes.
And adding to that, you're the very first Eagle Scout in Fulton County. It's a female, right?
Yep.
Wonderful. Now I'm going to put you on the spot. Do you know how many other Eagle Scouts we have in Fulton County?
Um, not sure. Not how many.
Okay, now let me give you another most sacred. If you throw out a number, no one's going to know. Now you know the mayor's secret.
Or just say at least one more.
There you go.
Yeah, I've got a lot. One of the...
Quite a few in Rochester.
Quite a few.
Well, it's, it's quite an honor. And I'm sure you know, remember Cody Kiefer? Uh, five, six years ago, Cody, I stood at his celebration for being an Eagle Scout in presentation to him. I have a picture of that on my board in my office, quality wall pride. Then his grandmother gave me a picture of Cody today to put next to it. And you know what he's doing today? He's in the Marine Corps. And it's a picture of Cody in his dress blues. You go into the service as an Eagle Scout, you get immediate credit in pay. You get more pay than the other recruit coming in, and a bump in rank. Did you know that? Okay, well, let me tell you something else about being an Eagle Scout. Jennifer, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I'm spot on with this. If you want to go to one of the military academies, they'll give you preference because you're an Eagle Scout. So it's a really big deal. With all that being said, this is going into the permanent record here in minutes tonight. Special City of Rochester proclamation. Whereas the City of Rochester, Indiana, and its mayor, the Honorable Theodore J. Dethan, proclaim August the 23rd, 2022, Kaylee DeSonia Day. Whereas Ms. DeSonia is being honored for obtaining the status of Eagle Scout with troop number 220 under the leadership of Scoutmaster Merle McKeel. Whereas Ms. DeSonia completed the seven ranks to Eagle Scout status in approximately three years, making her the first female scout to accomplish this task in Fulton County, Indiana. Note, Kaylee will be honored by the Rochester City Council by inclusion of this presentation into the permanent records of council minutes for 8/23/22. And she'll be honored by Mayor Denton with a presentation of the Mayor's pin for patriotism and service. The other Eagle Scout can receive the Mayor's pin. It's called pulse. We wear it every day. Plus, you get a copy of the proclamation and some extras that I've included for family members. I think they got a... I didn't get one that was oversized, I'm telling you. There you go. And we applaud our... Just like Cody, I expect you to keep in touch with me. And let me know all the good things you're doing. Thank you, Kaylee. We're proud of you.
Thank you so much.
Was there anyone you wanted to introduce?
Uh, this is my troop 220. That's Lexi, Lily, her brother's behind her, from 219, Alex, and then Ava and Evelyn.
Okay, but wasn't there someone even more important?
And my mom, that's my assistant of children, or assistant scoutmaster. That's here tonight.
How about your mother?
Yeah, and my mother-in-law.
Wow, that's, that's cool. Very, very nice. Okay, now we're going to have an update on our Main Street Community Crossing project. Okay, we'll be seeing shortly a couple of theoreticals and information about this. But we took the step, I made the decision last week after we got our bid open for the Main Street project. Revamping of the water main sewer, storm sewer situation and doing streets all the way from nice beat out to, out to the river, came in at about double what we had initially thought with engineering studies and such, that it was done by limited conditions, the economy and availability and such of materials. And made the decision to postpone that project for a year. We're going to set it on the shelf, go back a year in hopes that this economy does settle. Which is crazy, some of the things material wise we can't even get. So we're going to do that. We've talked to the NDOT folks, turned the million dollars back because we've seen this, it's no shock to them. And they're saying, come back next time when you feel like you can do this. So we're going to look at it again in a year. But we haven't done a project yet where we've gone at it like this. And we hope we can finish it down the road. We hope we get more money to be able to finish it. If we don't have vision on how we're going to pay for something starting out, we don't do it. So that's where we are right now. I might mention other projects. We continue to move forward with them. None of them, except for the waste treatment plant, that one. Of course, that was well underway before the inflationary situation hit our radar screen. Basically, folks, I warn the recession. People just don't want to admit it. You can have to pay eight dollars for a roasted chicken out of the grocery store. That's something that's different, where you go over and try and fry the grapefruit and it hasn't been in for two months. You're in, you're kind of a recession. So we're continuing with our programs that we had money budgeted for that had come in and the contractors are working with us with those figures. And the waste treatment plant is moving forward and we're going to have that finished up by the end of the year. We meet monthly on that and discuss any of the issues that come up. And there are many that come up, it's almost like a model of a recession, you know? There's always an issue, isn't there? Isn't there? There's always an issue and then that gets down to, are we going to pay extra? Or is there an alternative? So far, we're going to go work those things out. Any questions regarding any of that? All right, next on the agenda is city building code violations. And that's why...
I'm sorry, you need to open your public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's, that's a public hearing, okay.
For the budget.
Do I have a motion to open the public? Second by Gunner, moved by Goodman. Those in favor? Okay, we'll open the public hearing regarding city building code violations.
No, 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 no. Budget, no, the budget.
Oh, that's right. That's right. Okay, that's what your, that's what your arrow... I thought your arrow was going... I thought your arrow was going to the second one. So first, okay, we'll talk about the budget. Okay, Shawna, do you have it?
I handed it to Brian.
Okay, Brian.
He just asked for it, so he hasn't...
He delegated it to you.
I assumed I wasn't going to be reading it. You're going to make me read line by line, so I was getting frustrated. Shawna, why don't you help me now a little bit?
Sure. So to open the public hearing, essentially, we have estimated civil max levy for 2023 budget is going to be $3,484,331. The property tax credit estimate will be $311,700. So tax-supported levies, we are talking the general fund, motor vehicle highway fund, cumulative fire park, and cumulative capital development. The other funds are non-tax-supported funds. So our total budget, estimated budget for 2023, this includes federal and state grant funds, which really exploded the budget high just because we're anticipating some of those grants coming in. And the estimated funds to be raised by the levies will be $3,668,790. And therefore leaving our current tax levy set at $3,319,234. The percentage difference in budgeting is, oh, average, because we have an increase of 40% and a decrease of 37%. An increase of 15% for Kim Fire Park is 29. And CCD is 15. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's about the same as our previous conversation, just tonight's open for public comment or questions.
Yeah, you were all there for the budget session. There's nothing new here. We're having to roll the numbers, crunch it better, bump up some places where we need to bump up. Any questions up here? About from the public, any comments, questions?
I think Julian represents the public tonight. She could do a little less.
Heather doesn't count as public. What about Les? He could be public.
Well, yeah, well, yeah.
I'm here for the senior most.
Yeah, that's not going to happen.
Okay, uh, no comments. Publicly, no comments from the, from the dais here. Do I have a motion to close the public meeting? Second. Motion by Stan, second by Goodman. Those in favor? I see it rolling right along.
If I must say, no, right, Ruth?
Ruth, you're in charge. Lester, not Ruth.
Moved to open the public hearing for those city building code violations.
These are not actually public hearings.
No, that's, that's not a...
Ted.
It's under public hearings.
Well, I was... No, 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 no. The attorney corrected me this evening after he spoke to Heather earlier today, to which I just found out.
I withdraw.
Thank you.
This would be on your calendar August 23. Shawna made the one mistake for the year.
Hey, I made it to August. Woo!
I, I shouldn't say that. I don't want to jinx her. She has an audit coming up next week.
I was just going to say under Communications, I was going to mention that, yes, our State Board of Accounts audit starts and commences Thursday morning at 7:30 a.m.
And you all know that she does a really, really great job, is very capable with our financial situation. But whenever anybody says audit, what, the blood pressure goes up 20 points?
At least, yeah. I get a little anxious and I get a little, I'm very, I'm a little grumpy, maybe for the next month would be a nice way to put it, just because I want everything right and done.
Well, yeah.
Comments from Peter?
Grumpier.
I'll send Julian on you. She's the new mom.
There's another word involved.
And as I, as I mentioned to her, I said, well, yeah, okay, you've got an audit coming and that's very worrisome for anybody in the middle of it. But thank goodness it isn't federal audit, which you will get to experience with some of these grants.
Yeah, probably next year, 2023 will probably be, may be 2024. We may be looking at our first federal audit.
Federal audit.
Not looking forward to that.
When? 2024.
It'll either be for 2023 or 2024.
Well, we got a little bit of a draw.
I'm good with that.
Okay, enough of the talk about audits. Now, may I get to Florida? Heather? Heather, could you step up and talk about the code building violations?
And she's going to pass the ball. I actually just sent Shawna all these violations that we've been sending, the city building code violations, and nothing's been accomplished. So I'm bringing it to you to see what you want my next step to be, who you want me to bring it to, the city council? Want me to set up a public hearing to see if you can get them to move any quicker?
The owners on record, are they most out of towners or...?
No, but some of them are repeats.
Uh, yeah, repeats and then they call and say, okay, we're going to work on it. So we give them time and, like the one, I don't know how close you looked at them, the one with the metal roof bent over, it's been like that for over a year.
Yeah, I, I remember one in particular here, which your predecessor brought forward, this group actually voted for demolition. And then the owner came and said, listen, Maeco, Maeco, I'm going to do this. That hadn't happened.
That's the issue we ran into. We tried to give people the benefit of the doubt. And then Andy did call me the other day about 311 Fulton. We turned that over to Andy Perkins already. So that was not a building violation, that was a zoning violation. So what I have before you today is just building code violations. I just want to know what you want my next step to be, who you want me to bring it to.
It's a normal process. We, we hit the violations and we really don't...
Yeah, and it may, may help if, if I may, to back up a little bit and explain for those on council who haven't really spent a lot of time in this before, the difference between the building code and the unsafe building ordinance, okay? So your, your city code, you have a building code, I think it's the 150s, and you have the unsafe building ordinance. Think of the unsafe building ordinance as a pure adoption of part of the Indiana code. And you're not allowed, most of you scotties have done it. There's a little bit of difference in procedure in terms of what due process, if you will, you owe to the, to the property owner. So for the unsafe building ordinance, the way that works is Heather's office can write a letter either based on a referral from someone or because of a routine inspection, whatever. She can write a letter on your behalf. But before that can have, can result in a, any kind of court action, that has to come before a council. And that's where we've had the before, and I tell you, your options are, you know, you could give them more time, you can deny the request, or you can approve the request. To approve the request essentially, or affirm, is essentially to tell my office to go ahead and file a court action. The building code does not require that much formality to proceed with a court action. One of the things that was discussed with the redevelopment commission is ways we could take all kinds of violations and make property owners more accountable. And one of the things that was contemplated is to reserve some time at maybe every, every other board of public works meeting and just bring it there for some regular accountability. You quickly sort out those who are asking for a little more time with those who are blowing you off, okay? And, but you don't have to do that. With things that are pure building code issues, you can have a, a standing order to Heather's office to say, give them 10 days and then turn it over to the city attorney if they don't respond in 10 days. That's a little more wide open in terms of what you want to make the checks against them. I think, and chief correct me if I misremembered part of it, but I think a lot of discussion with the redevelopment commission is fines are not the most effective way to get people to clean up the property or fix something. It's usually the accountability and seeing whether it's seeing the chief, whether you're seeing the board of public works, whether you're significant counsel. It's that kind of accountability that's going to get people kind of off their complacency to, to get something done.
Well, and if I may interject, the reason these five are here and they're, they're in front of us, basically for a request or a vote for demolition is because they're unsafe, correct?
No, I'm not here for a request of demolition. They've been on our list for a long time, so I'm here to see what next step you want me to take, which that's...
Well, I know at least one of these was adjudicated by this council when Casey was in the office to be demolished. And I, that's when the owner came forward and did a, gee, I'm going to do this.
Race Street.
Yep, yep, yeah. I, you know, before there is a demolition of any property, it has to be adjudicated, voted on by the council.
Now, the other ones don't really, I mean, they're not really structurally unsafe. They just need some repairs. They're, they just need fixed up to code. They're not unlivable. They're just, the letters aren't doing anything to... A lot of it's the roofs and the windows and the doors. They just need fixed.
And then are you here to suggest that we turn these then over to Andy to go through the litigation process?
That's fine.
So what is that, what is the end of that process if we turn it over to you? Because since we're not talking unsafe, we're just talking code violation, what is...
Generally, two things. One is a fine, the other is an injunction. So I would ask the court to order them to do what Shannon has already, I'm sorry, what Heather has already asked them to, to do. And if they don't do it, I can request the beholding attempt. So that would be, that would be a stick. We don't have it.
Well, I know the one I was referring to, the front end of it had fallen off. And there were, it was accessible, the building was, kids would get in and doing all sorts of things. And that's why it had progressed to the stage it was at.
Do you know if these are rental properties or they're actually people living here?
I think most of them are rentals, and I know the one on Race Street, he's been in violation forever.
And that's vacant.
It's vacant, and we did have a gentleman interested in purchasing it, but however, the lot is so small, he can't do anything with it. So if he tears that house down, he can't build anything on it. So that deterred him from purchasing it, so. The other ones are rentals. I believe all of them are rentals. A couple of them are owned by the same person. It should be in the letters. The one on 1430 Monroe Street, I'm really surprised he hasn't done anything. His, it really isn't needing much. He just needs to finish it up.
Is that the one that had gone through a fire? There's been a couple, two or three owners.
This owner owned it for a while.
Yeah, they put siding on it. That's better than...
And then I believe Tillman owns two of them.
So how many times have you contacted them so far? And they've gotten, received no fines, no...
Well, there really is no fines as a building code violation. The two owned by Tillman went on tax sale, but he still owns them, so he must have paid. Race Street, we always ran into that problem, but they've been in violation for over a year. Sometimes letters work and sometimes that's why I just need to know how. Do you want me to just turn them over to Andy? Do you want me to make a city council public hearing so you guys can actually speak to the property owners, see what their intentions are, or just straight go to Andy and...
Well, I think if we, if we shook the addresses to this Andy over here, he can probably also add that there's been code violations relative to them keeping their lawn and everything like that. Yeah, we're doing, we're probably doing mowing on some of these now and putting on the tax bill.
I don't know that any of these...
You don't go ahead.
The other thing, Andy, correct me if I'm wrong, but the other conversation that I believe had happened with the redevelopment commission and all of that was kicking some of this, these preliminary steps over to the board of works to handle for that public presence to start. So that way that since board of works meets twice, or every two weeks, it would give more opportunity to get the property owners in here and talking in the public. So I don't, do you remember that conversation being part of that, when you guys were talking about that, trying to come up with a process? And then once, if it got to that point where the council, then the council needed to step in to take action because it was actually an ordinance.
Well, yeah, and then you're, you're touching on something that Andy touched on. He's been part of discussions with the redevelopment commission as well as Andy Perkins on changing our process for these code violations up to and including a code officer that would work with these people and through the board of works, give them an opportunity working to a plan to get the, and then if they can't follow the plan, can't do it, then it gets into the statutory part. I, yeah, I do remember it being suggested it be deferred over to the board of works.
Mr. Mayor, you, the council could kind of bifurcate that and say, look, for the ones that are in front of us that are building code violations, these are old enough, we want to do X with them. But going forward, why don't we just ask Heather in the future, when she writes these up, every time she writes one of these up, to coordinate a date on the board of public works calendar so that in the future, their first stop, once they open the letter, they see, okay, the board of works is going to be talking about this in two weeks, I better be there. That, you could split that. You don't have to make, you can make one decision for what's here, then a different decision going... decision going forward. Since none of that is cast in your ordinance or statute by a particular method, there's nothing wrong with doing it that way.
Would it be possible at this point in time for letters to be sent out to each one of these folks again saying, this is in fact going to happen, the next step would be in your court? I don't know, and you may want to weed out, quote unquote, pardon the pun, weed out the one that we've dealt with in the past that had gone to condemnation. That may need to be a stronger letter. There was, there was some commitments made, they didn't happen. It's not only gotten worse, it's gotten seriously worse. So condemnation is probably in the, in the picture for that one.
Your office hasn't heard from any of these people on any of this?
Not for a while, no.
Well, could we do that, use your suggestion, but maybe you could work with Heather to draft the proper letter.
Sure.
So that it has the right punch to it that we need.
Yeah, I need to make sure that whatever the minutes reflect the agreement was at that time, I need to make sure that we can demonstrate it wasn't complied with.
Yes.
Otherwise, it might be simpler to reset button on that one and send them a new letter, but I'll, I can get with that.
Well, I've seen several of these properties and, you know, whether they're meeting the requirements of our code situation for condemnation or not, they're still very dangerous properties because they're definitely not being kept up. And I doubt very seriously there's any homeowners insurance involved there. So somewhere along the line, somebody's going to have a problem and will be pulled into it at that time because we will have been reviewing it forever. I don't know, I would suggest that, suggest a letter.
Does the council need to actually vote on that?
No, no, the council, I don't think the council needs to vote on that. I think Heather's office needs some direction as the, kind of, the party contracted with the city to do the work, needs some direction as to what you want to have.
Well, I would, I would like to have a vote to see if the council's support on this. I don't want to just cut council off on this. Anybody have any statements to make? These are very old.
No, I think what Andy's proposed, seems like a good idea to me at this point.
Make that a motion. Go to the second. Most in favor? Okay, you guys have a clear direction.
So we're proceeding on the ones that are here, but sending letters to do it just in case, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. That's not good. There's subtraction going, right?
Yes, and I'll check into the condemnation order. I didn't see that one when I looked through everything, so.
I'm pretty sure at that point, it was just after the front of it had fallen off. It was hanging down, it's gone now.
Yeah. Yeah, it cleaned up for a day or two.
Yep, yep. Anything else to report while you're here with the urban planning commission?
I just have the comprehensive plan, it's completed. And then I had a few amendments that, I threw those in there since I was coming in public notices anyway, so. Have you guys looked at them, or do you want me to read them? For the amendments? We're just a little small handful.
How many are?
Probably five or six for the city.
You want to just read them?
Well, after we had our south of town project come in front of us, I noticed the general commercial and the highway commercial in industrial district, they had special exceptions for homes, but there was no minimum floor area requirement. So we added that language in there, we added the minimum main floor area of 980 square feet. It's the same as all the residential districts in the ag district, just so whatever district allows single-family homes, whether permitted or special exception, that we have that code of a size requirement, because we didn't have that in there. Didn't notice that until we stopped talking about it, so. And then in the downtown commercial district, we noticed that it said mobile homes were allowed. I believe that was probably a mistake, so we removed that. And we changed the language a little bit on all the districts regarding the lot width and lot frontage, just simply because it has two different measurements and is very confusing for the public as well as the staff to understand what the difference was between the frontage and the width. So same language, it's just in there a little different. And then we had street cuts, curb cuts, and storm server hookups listed under location improvement permits to be obtained. We don't issue those, so I removed those from the list as well. And we are changing our violations. We will now only issue four letters versus nine, so the fines will go up very quickly. We'll still work with people, the ones that are actually cleaning up, but we've just got so many, I mean, Andy probably gets two a week from us that they're just not doing anything. So hopefully this will help, maybe. And then we had a Senate enrolled act number 139 that passed, so in the mobile home park districts, we can no longer enforce size requirements on mobile homes. So anything in the mobile home park, we can't tell them what size they can have, minimum size. Right now, it's 14 by 70 was our code. I had to scratch that out because we can't tell them that, so.
Does that also go right over and then into lot size? Still have a restriction on lot size?
Yeah, we still have a restriction on lot size, it's just currently it was in the mobile home anywhere, you couldn't have, had to be a 14 by 70 or larger. We cannot enforce that in mobile home park districts. We still can in the ag districts, but not the mobile home park, so. And that was all for the city. And then the comprehensive plan.
Anybody have any questions for Heather? Nothing else, thank you, my dear. Appreciate you, appreciate you coming. Why don't you, why don't you stop and see us, why don't you, a while, just to, just to give us a little update as such. How's the job going? You've been in it now, so you're probably an old pro at it.
It's getting better. It's hard to stop and just visit. We have the planning commission meeting on Monday, we have the city on Wednesday, so I have three meetings in a row when you guys meet.
Well, and you have a whole new staff, correct? They're all pretty, pretty new.
They've been there a year now, in June.
Yeah. Well, you do a good job. It's a tough job. You do a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Thought I could email you. Yes. Okay. All right.
Okay, under, your business restaurant cap, Council of Government.
I was curious when I saw that.
You're welcome.
All right, you have only got 500,000.
Yeah.
There you go.
Now, a short report, I did receive confirmation today that even though the ready grant is ARPA funds, you can use your initial ARPA distribution for grant purposes for that grant. There are other grants you cannot do that with, but this particular one, you can. That helps the situation especially since we're setting our other project on the shelf for a year.
I have questions on that. I mean, you shared the commitment letter and the county's putting in 500,000, we're bringing in 500,000 for the in-kind match. It's a one to three to one, one public money, three private, and one part, the ready grant. We're going after a million dollars.
Correct.
The Apache Drive expansion, including sidewalks for the school's evacuation ground on 14. So it's a good, it's a good project for the community.
We are, like I said, we are, like Brian said, we are doing this in collusion with the county. It's going to benefit the county, it's going to benefit the city, it's going to benefit the school. The information that they were asking us to submit, that they were taking to the IEDC last week, who administers the funds for the feds, and of course, you know, the president of the North Central Association, Paul Lyman, had come to us to see if the city had a project that would meet all the criteria for the ready grant, because the Meadows project did not. So this is how the Apache Drive project came into play, we gave information on that. Then there was a public meeting that you two attended, as well as our court treasurer and Martin Davis, who's there also, the water board, and who else did we have? Oh, John Loeb was there representing the city. And there were several pockets of groups from county and city, and they all believed that that was a worthwhile project to put towards the ready grant as why they did. So we pulled together the information, initially asked for, it's gone to them, they've been to the IEDC with it. Now there's about 12 things they're asking for as follow-up information for it. And the process of pulling that information together. The engineering folks, our USI, who are redevelopment commission on this project, has been working with it about a year, two, a year. So they have it pretty well designed, our part of it, which was another reason they were anxious to take it forward. We have a pretty nice design laid out from the Apache Drive part that's connecting everything to Highway 14. The thing that was lacking was the sidewalk part of it, the county wanted to bring in that would go down 14 all the way to Good's Funeral Home, which will benefit, you know, those people out there walking the school, plus the school will benefit there, including it as part of their procedure for an active shooter, junior high and high school, empty the school because if there's an anti-shooter or such, then the kids will have an access point to get far enough away to be in safe area. They designated the church out there and also Good's Funeral Home is a place to build. And the county is still working with NDOT on the, as well as USI, on crossing out the Ts and then dotting of the Is for the approvals to do that. We had looked at it seven years ago, and NDOT wasn't interested at that point in talking about a sidewalk on a state highway. You don't see too many. So they're in the middle of that now, and they say there's subtraction coming, it looks like they're, they're going to get that, get that accomplished. So that's where we are with that right now, but it's, it's a, it's a good project, and it's one we think we can work together.
Mayor, if I can interject, one thing I will need to bring back to the council, and I'll probably do that in September, if the county, if you vote tonight to commit the 500,000, I will bring back our resolution for the ARPA money. If you recall, we had had a resolution designated how we were going to spend those funds, so we need to amend that from being our Main Street project to be potentially used for the Apache.
Simply make this Main Street project? I thought we did it for stormwater.
Yeah, well, it was stormwater. I'd have to reword it, I think I left it, but we may, that I think we need to amend it to make sure that it does cover whatever project.
Yeah, I don't think you specifically had for either category where we were planning on using it specifically.
For stormwater, because we had to use it for utilities, so.
Yep, had to be used for utilities, and stormwater's where we'd be using it. Technically, technically, in my opinion, we could go forth and use what we've already got because stormwater is included in that process, that project, but it would be cleaner.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that our, because the US Treasury Department is very specific on our plan, so I want to make sure that our plan is, covers whatever projects we may want to use or not use. If we don't, if we end up not needing to use it, no problem, we'll just send it back to the US Treasury and call it done.
Well, I mean, that, that's.
But we need to make sure.
I thought we were very prudent how we initially set it up, maybe the utility would be used for stormwater, the utility.
Well, water, it had water, stormwater, the only one I don't believe we listed was wastewater.
That's right, and stormwater, we had the general water, which we're looking for the loop line here. I thought we were very prudent.
I'll double check it.
By being ambiguous with it because you might have the project.
That gets changed.
But the one over here is continuing at all.
I'll double check it and make sure, I, off the top of my head, I just cannot remember unless the attorney forgets, I bet Andy and his handy little folder over there, but I'll verify that, that it is not a big deal if we do need to make any amendments, just to make.
So it's okay that they, that we were changing?
Yeah. It's very fluid. You just have to have a plan, but it can be fluid.
Again, I would like to see it written, so it's a bit ambiguous, but it does talk about utilities, that that's what, that's what it'd be used for. I mean, if there's no matching grant coming through on this project, uh, may not happen in its inception.
Correct. And again, it's money that we might not even need to utilize, so, I mean, we just, before we spend it, we have to have a plan. Right now, we have two commitments that we have to spend it for, and that was our water main loop and health department. So those two pieces have to come out of that money, so that's why I want to make sure that the plan is actually updated if we need to make any changes before I cut it in checks.
So you'd like to see some specificity?
No, it doesn't need to be.
Specificity?
Say that.
Easy for you to say.
So I'll review it and just to cover it, I just, it make, I just wanted to give you guys a heads up that we may have to bring it back next month for revision or amendment.
I know some of you have been involved in that project, some cabinet, but you have a general idea. If you read the newspaper article, the county is quoted, putting in what we're collaborating, I had pretty much laid it out for you. We're going to open up the south end of town there, our part of it that we've been working on for a year, is connecting Peachtree and right on through, past the Schubert Theater, right out to Highway 14, which we believe will open up that old southern end down there for development. Anybody have any questions or comments or concerns or? I go back and stay again, if we can't put monies together, we're not going to stick our way out. We're going to continue to be conservative in that fiscal responsibility area. And if we tend not to be shot, I'll kill me, so, you know. Now, any questions? All questions?
Are sidewalks, just for clarification, because I didn't hear from the county, are sidewalks planned on both sides of Apache, the extension?
No, I don't believe it's both sides.
Just one side.
Just one side.
No, on Apache sidewalks, I thought were on both sides.
I don't think so.
In the design plan.
I don't think so.
It was one side on Peachtree and both sides on Apache. We'll, let's, we'll pull the plans out and verify that for you, but I was thinking Peachtree, it was just the one side.
The north side.
Do you remember, Ruth?
I would think two sides would make sense.
For Apache only, but Peachtree, it didn't make sense because of the, I don't want to say ditch, but whatever that fence line right there, they didn't have it. But we'll verify that for sure.
Right.
And down State Road 14 was only one side.
The north side.
We're looking right down the north side at this point.
We'll look at that. I, I'm, I'm thinking it was only one side, and she's thinking it was two sides. We'll check it out.
Yeah, we've got the design plans later.
Yeah, again, we were trying to give the service and be as frivolous as we could. Okay, anything else? Good question. All right. We will move on to ordinance resolutions. We've got a water tapping fee amendment, orders for ordinance 02, that's 2.2, and it's nice that we got our water superintendent here, you're highly involved in this, would you like to explain what that's about?
Who's our water superintendent?
That would be Mr. Halliburton, right over there.
We should have called Mr. Halliburton.
So we reached out to Andy for some clarification, and we talked with Eric Walsh from Baker Tilly, and we just wanted clarification on when somebody develops property as in a subdivision or something large enough that they put their own utilities in. or something large enough that they put their own utilities in and then grant them over to the city at the end. For our maintenance inventory, do they still have to pay all the tapping fees and what fees do they have to pay? So we reached out to Andy and Eric and asked for their advice and their information, which thank goodness that we have Andy because he's so good at it. But, and basically in clarification, we will waive those fees for the tap fees if they're developing it. So that we're not basically hitting them twice with it. They're, they're paying for the infrastructure to be put in the ground and develop it all and then hand it over to us to put in the inventory. There's no sense in charging them for all the tap fees when they've done it all. So on the development side.
And that's where then the buyer coming in.
Yeah.
Would pay the tap fee, yeah.
If it's handed over to us and then there's still 10 lots that have to be developed, then unfortunately those 10 people would still have to pay their fees once it's deemed the city's. But until it's the city's, there is no fees besides the one-time connection fee. And then the people that purchase, so for instance, if, if the developer puts something in their name up here at the water office, they would still have to pay the system development charge per the size of the meter and the meter deposit, but they wouldn't have to pay the tap fees. So we just asked for the clarification to be done so that we all would know going forward for the future what, what that looks like and how to let the developers know what, what the fees will actually be.
So this doesn't represent a change in practice in the way you've been doing it? It just clarifies for someone to read the ordinance to clarify.
Clarifies the ordinance.
Yeah.
Actually changes the wording in the ordinance. So we've got to have a, have a city council approval for that. Do I have a motion to read ordinance 02-2022?
By title only, so moved.
Second by Ruth. By title only, those in favor?
You're letting most of them.
Okay.
Ordinance number 2-2022, ordinance to amend city code 52.018 tapping fees.
Okay, any, any discussion? Okay, do I have a motion for the second reading of ordinance 02-2022? Second. Wilson make motion to Goodman, second, those in favor?
Okay. Ordinance number 2-2022, and ordinance to amend city code 52.018 tapping fees.
Okay, discussion? Do I have a motion to suspend the rules above the third reading by title only?
So moved.
Now we've got, now we've got stereo going on down here on the right side. Okay, it's moved by Wilson and second. It's by Thompson, those in favor?
Okay. Ordinance number 2-2022, and ordinance to amend city code 2.018 tapping fees.
Okay, any discussion? Those in favor of accepting ordinance?
Move for the adoption of ordinance 2-2022.
Goodman has moved acceptance of 0-2022, 02-2022, second?
Second.
Second by Smith, those in favor? Everybody, okay, thank you very much. Okay, resolution 8-2022, area plan, comprehensive plan amendments, those are, those are what Heather just read to us. Do I have a motion for a reading of resolution 08-2022?
By title only.
Okay, by title only, second by Wilson, those in favor? Okay. You're in favor. Okay. You're fine.
Resolution number 08-2022, resolution of the city of Rochester, adopt amendments to the Fulton County Zone Ordinance, Subdivision Control Ordinance and the Confidence of Plan.
Okay. Do I have a motion for acceptance of resolution 08-2022?
So moved.
Moved by Goodman, accepted by Wilson, those in favor? Okay, thank you. Okay, that brings us then to our department heads. Chief Fucker, would you start, stop?
Reading of my fire report by title only, the month of July. Good job.
Yay!
I like it, Tom.
That was a little play. I need to let him off the hook. Month of July, auto fire alarms, two in the city, one in Rochester Township. Structure fires, one in the city. Vehicle fires, one in the city. Brush, grass fires, four in Rochester Township, two in Newcastle Township. Mutual aid fires, one in Liberty Township. Accidents, two in the city. Four in Rochester Township, two in Richland Township. Medical assists, 19 in the city, 12 in Rochester Township, two in Richland Township. Gas leaks, two in the city. Rescues, one in the city. Animal, animal rescues, one in Rochester Township. Service calls, one in the city. Cancelled calls, three in the city, two in Rochester Township, for a total of 63. We conducted one night of training. Pending your questions, that concludes my report.
Any questions for the chief? Thank you, chief. Chief Chaz?
Uh, you've got the numbers there for the month of June and July. June, we have 537 calls for service. July, 557, 17 and 27 people incarcerated. And then you have the crimes that those people are lodged for. All pretty much standard stuff on that. Other than that, Brady Briggs just graduated the academy. He's back this week, but now we're losing Bryce Michael. He went Monday for physical assessment and starts the academy next week. So we got one back and we're losing another one. We're still in the hiring process trying to replace our last officer.
Yeah, well, when you say you, one's going to be out of, out of the loop here for a while going to school, so.
Yeah.
I hate to hear you say you lost one.
Yeah. No, no, no.
Did I have a call occasion that they're not?
Yeah.
I know, I was thinking the same thing.
We're losing one from the road.
Yeah, that makes me feel better. Yeah. Any, any questions for Chief Chaz? Thank you, chief.
Thanks.
Derek?
Water department monthly duties for the month of July. The top eight are our normal duties. Digs that were performed, we fixed a service line leak at 316 Jefferson Street, service line leak at 929 Madison, and fixed a service line leak at 1010 Wall Bash Avenue. And we made a new one-inch tap at 118 West Fourth Street. And then callouts, Randy Carr was called out on the first at 415 to 310 Pontiac Street for a meter horn leaking. That meter horn, new meter horn was dropped off for the plumbers to install. And then Joe Murray was called out on the sixth at 345 to 1208 Elm Street. Yep, it's, it's something I knew, but they had no water and it was a kitchen faucet. The screen was plugged in it. But at the time, we had no idea what the call was besides they had no water. And then Chris Towell was called out on the 11th at 529 PM to 702 Ewing Road for a potential water leak. The water leak was the homeowner's responsibility. And then Carr was called out again on the 23rd at 145 PM to 1306 Washington Street for emergency locate for a gas leak. Other than that, that's all I have.
Any questions for Derek? I'm just going to request, we don't have too many of those plugged up screens.
Yeah, me too. Me too.
I didn't know they liked that.
Well, I, you know, I'm, I'm sitting here thinking.
What they failed to tell you is when you get the call, it's, I have no water. It's not, I have no water just to the kitchen faucet.
I'll bet, I'll bet you got on the call sheet now, ask if the screen has been replaced or plugged in.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't know what a plumber would do. There'd be a FTV, yeah. Okay, good job. Derek, any questions for Derek? You did have that issue where the fire hydrant got hit tonight.
Uh, yeah, that'll be on next month's report.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Duane?
Other than our daily street maintenance, we have Sixth Street, Minna Creek project. We have the guardrail up. We had curbs put in last week. We're still waiting to have the blacktop put down. EMB was supposed to do that last week, but then their equipment broke down. So we still have that to do. And then a little bit of landscaping and that part of the project will be done and then waiting till it's fall then where we can do the clean out on Minna Creek. We also have a paving list we've been working on, more to come on that. That's being developed and then have quotes done on that. On the park side, pickleball court is done except for the perimeter fence. That is, we're waiting on the, the fencing material for that. Once that's in, then we'll have the perimeter fence put in and the pickleball court will be done. But it's been being used quite a bit already. So that's been, been a plus.
You know, I'm going to have to check here.
Sure.
You're right. I've noticed that too. It's being heavily used.
Yep.
Need a fence?
Yes, we do. Yeah, yeah. In fact, they, I got stopped one day by some of the players wanting to know when the fence was going to go up so they didn't have to chase their balls.
Okay.
So, yes, so it is being used quite a bit and so that's, that's been a plus. People are happy with it. The pool hours, we extended those after school started. Normally we would close the pool. We thought we would try this year to extend the hours to Labor Day for weekends only just because of the weather being still nice, try to utilize the pool a little more. And so far, we've had people in on the weekends, so I think that's, that's been a positive also. So, uh, once we get done this month, then we'll look at the numbers, see if it really makes sense as far as cost to, to keep it open. But more to come on that. And that's really all I have. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Duane?
So there's no set date for closure before?
Labor Day.
Yeah.
And also at that time, we'll be closing the splash pad at the park.
Are the folks who, who sold the spice pad, are they coming down to work on the shutdown of it?
At this point, I'm not planning on that. I'm planning on us taking care of it.
Okay. Okay, very good. Any questions for Duane? Okay, thank you, Duane. Reports of committees, we have downtown partnership folk here. We don't have David Heidi here. We've got area planning commission group in there, gave us some stuff, what you got.
We approved a new subdivision, five houses for Skidmore.
Okay.
They're beside the walking trail, beside the nipple plate trail.
Right.
So the backside of the houses will be the nipple plate and then they're utilizing a road. So we've got five different lots to sell. They all meet the requirements size-wise. Right now, it's still, it's not city, so they'll have to put in their own wells and everything else.
Yeah, I was going to ask, that is an in-city, right?
Right, no, it's not.
Okay.
I, I did talk to an afterwards and said, hey, you might want to give Shota a look see. I don't know if you're too far away, but.
Where's it located at?
Do I?
I know on Wall Bash, but is it on the other side of their drive?
And we've got, we've got infrastructure pretty close, no?
Because, because.
So I did, and he thought it was a good idea to come and at least ask what the criteria was. So he might be stopping in visiting.
Because they talked about actually, when they brought it across Wall Bash to feed some of those houses that are already there, putting a tee and a valve to go south and they chose not to do that. So I think the valve was there for an expansion, I think. I'll have to look at the prints, so.
We've got sewer there as well.
Okay. I took that opportunity. See, it's good for me to set up more and one more.
I think they brought that across Wall Bash as well.
I think, I think so. We have to check all that out because they, you know, if, if the assessment is a situation we'll go through pretty smoothly, we ought to get it, get our status assessment, we ought to get it brought into the city.
So, so he liked the idea. Some people would be visiting before he.
Well, he did that process with the properties, the long hickory. So he went through that process, but he did all of it.
Steve did.
Yes.
Yeah.
So he's, he's been through the annex.
Because there's water, there's water and sewer that comes off the hickory that goes behind all them houses.
Yeah.
And then before you get to the end of that road, there's a line that comes across. So if you see the hydrant out on Wall Bash, there's a line that comes straight across from that.
Well, that would certainly clean up a whole lot for that situation and also it would have the app lots and such.
Well, that's fine. That's what I, why.
I mean, it would cost them, it would cost them just to develop it to there where they need to go. That'd be on them, but.
Yeah, that's a whole lot.
But still.
It's the same, it's basically the same thing as what the Fedco's doing on Blacketer. They would have to continue the main to get down to there and then.
It's a good thought, Ruth, thank you.
Which Skidmore already did ask for at Wall Bash once, so.
I figured if he came and it didn't work, it doesn't work, but if you don't know to ask, you know.
It never hurts to ask.
That's right.
Yeah. Is there anything else going on?
The fact is it.
Okay. Any questions for Ruth? Thank you, Ruth. Brian, anything for Fedco?
Yeah, as Derek said, Blacketer's continuing. Good news, water line's in place. The bad news, the sewer line wasn't where it was shown on the plans. The road's gonna, it's gonna interfere with the road. So we, there's a quote to extend the sewer line. Waiting on a quote to see about adding the laterals. Quote, as it stands now, is $9,240, which is not any funding that Fedco currently has.
Brian, can I add to that?
Sure.
Only half of that water main's done. It's all in, just only half of it's past the back tees. They haven't. They flushed the other in one time, but they haven't taken their back tees yet.
What was done was to satisfy the requirement of the one.
To get to match.
Yeah.
And I was in conversation with Thomas Escavadian. They were asking potential for water service lines to be ran across the road as well before.
Did I say it was done?
You, you did.
Water line is in place. That was a report.
I, I do know that they were talking service lines to get across to at least three of the lots.
Yeah, a lot, a lot over there. It would make sense to see what it would take to get all that stuff run so we don't have to keep going back and digging up and not disturb a road that goes in. So there, I forwarded to the council, inside Indiana Business, Fedco was the lead story. I got that today. I'll get to.
I have it.
Okay. So I got that for you. Today.
Our economic development specialist, Mayor Barton's office.
Today met and started revamping the bylaws for board approval. Turned over to the attorney. He's going to get it typed up and we'll present it to the board. And that we're, you know, rolling out according to the plan from the consultant thus far. So the next step will be filling that director's role.
Okay. Any questions for Duane?
Thank you, sir.
Okay. No more questions. Card forward, Thompson. No report. Council on Aging and BCA, Council on Smith.
BCA meets tomorrow night. I'll be unable to attend, but it's kind of interesting because last month they reported that the item in front of the BCA board was a, a new house. And evidently at the time last month, they had not decided on whether it'd be a covered balcony on the lakeside of the house or not. And so now they're back this month to ask for a variance on the covered balcony on the back of the house.
Does that make a hitch issue out of the?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's always a late problem, yeah.
Then for council on aging, just a very brief report for Transpo. Everything's going great and. Everything's going great and smoothly. They're continuing to build up rides, and they are now averaging about a hundred trips a day. So those numbers are still climbing, and for whatever reason, again, Fulton County and our Transpo is rebuilding at a quicker percentage than those around us, so I'm not really sure why that's happening. Then there was a very robust report from the RSPP people whose trips are being very well-attended, and October twenty, they've added another day trip on October twenty-nine to Marshall, Michigan for the Cornsville-Turkeyville dinner and show. I've never visited that show, but evidently, it's on the list of pretty nice things to do, so there's a group going up there. The tax preparation work that they did, they've been a little bit disappointed in the IRS, if you can imagine that. The refunds have not been coming in very quickly. One of the things they think they can do is they're going to become a VITA site next year for the IRS, Volunteer Income Tax Assistance. And what that is going to do for them is give them more access to those reports and be able to report to people a more accurate and speedy process of getting returns. So not, you know, it just helps those people that need help, and that's what they're doing.
These IRS folks coming in to help these people?
No, are actually...
I think that would be a conflict, yeah.
Yeah, Anne and her assistant are going to school to get certified to be a VITA or VIDA, I'm not sure which it is, probably VITA site. And when they pass that schooling, they'll be able to be a certified VITA site. And then in September, I think it is the fifteenth, fourteenth and fifteenth, or fifteenth and sixteenth, I'm not sure. Rochester, Fulton County is hosting all of the RSPP directors around the state, I think there's ten districts, and they'll be coming here for a two-day meeting, and they will also volunteer in a project around Rochester, and all those directors will help in that project. They haven't decided on which project to use yet, but I believe that's it for my report. Sir, questions?
Hundred trips a day.
Hundred trips a day. They're right at that number.
Are they still working on the gas contract? They're not being pressured?
They are contracted, actually.
Yes.
Yeah, and they are set through twenty-three, so...
Oh, great. We've been doing some, Randy, we're here, Randy Williams, he'd be reporting, we've been doing some work on building and such, replacing some of the LED outside lighting. I understand there was a project going on to put LED lights inside.
Yes, right.
He knows that completely, yeah.
Yes.
Nice things are going on.
Yes, it's fun to see the building back together. If you are interested in, do you all get the newsletter from...
Yes.
Council on Aging?
We do now.
I get it.
I think we get two up here, because I think one is directly to you, and then we get one here at City Hall.
It's really easy if you want it, and just tell me, and I'll make sure you get on the list.
It's really worth while.
There's a lot of activity that goes on in that building that most people are unaware of, so if you want that newsletter, there's a lot of information in it, and certainly glad to get it to you if you let me know. That'd be fun.
It's actually, you know, it really is. It's quite a thick...
Yeah, it's a nice newsletter.
It's folded in half, it's pretty colorful on the outside, and...
I mean, if it's not a financial burden for them, why don't you just include all the council members for it, obviously.
Okay.
It's really a nice, informative newsletter. It says every once in a while, there's a picture of Council and Smith in there.
And the mayor.
Once in a great while, you have the mayor.
And he can decide if you want to go eat lunch or something. They print the whole menu for the month, and you just let them, give them a call, just let them know you're coming, and...
Who prepares those menus? They don't do it right there, do they?
The lunch?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, in the new... Moore.
Yes.
What was her first name?
Terry. Terry Moore.
Terry, thank you. Can you forget that? Yeah, in the, Captain Terry, you're there?
Okay. Any questions for Council and Smith? Thanks, Marty.
Yep.
Solid Voice Animal Adoption Center, Council of Wilson.
Those groups have decided to meet every other month, so we did not meet this one.
Okay. And that's what I got here. And Eric did a nice job telling me about the water department. Okay, do we have any legal issues?
Nothing.
Attorney Perkins?
Nothing we haven't already discussed.
Any ADA concerns, Shada?
None that have been brought to me in the last month.
I haven't heard anything either. I would suggest, any of you who are getting out of that loop that all you guys do, run over and take a look at the progress and such that Duane was made over on the Minno Creek project. Drive down Sixth, you actually have to cross it. Other than having it painted, it really, really looks nice. You can look up one side, down the other, and see what the big pipe is doing for Minno Creek. It's working very well. Haven't had any flooded properties yet, have we?
Nope.
Yeah.
It's worked well.
Working good. Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn if there's nothing else.
So moved.
By Goodman, seconded by Thompson, those in favor? More adjourned, thank you.